Hello and welcome to study session number twenty eight of daily memory lab. In today's study session, we will first discuss. Page number eleven to sixteen of supply under GST which will be our fifth round of those five pages. And we will go to the second segment which is round four of charge of GST page number one to seven. And then round three of page number thirty nine to forty three, then round four of sixty two sixty six. And then we will do the last five pages of sub- charge of GST chapter. So on that note, let us go to the first segment of this video. Before that, let us set our pre-study session intention. Now I am going to study for thirty to sixty minutes with full focus. In this study session, I lower down all my expectations and embrace imperfection. I may or may not get big breakthroughs in this study session and I am totally okay with it. I will most likely make mistakes in the next thirty to sixty minutes and if I make them, I am not going to judge myself. I embrace my mistakes and reset my ambitions. My goal is not to achieve perfection. My goal is only to make a tiny progress in the next thirty to sixty minutes. On that note, let us proceed to the first segment. Definition of analysis, so I mean definition of supply, so we will. Go in detail about what is given in here, supply, the analysis of the definition, supply. Meaning and scope of supply in terms of section seven can be understood in terms of following parameters. Supply should be of goods or services, it should be for a consideration, it should be in the course or furtherance of business. Aforesaid parameters describe the concept of supply. However, there are a few exceptions to second and third parameters. In the GST law, few exceptions have been carved out where a transaction is deemed to be a supply even without consideration. Similarly, the condition of supply to be made in the course or furtherance of business has been relaxed in case of import of services. Further, there are also cases where a transaction is kept out of scope of supply despite the existence of the param- above parameters. That is, a list of activities which are neither treated as supply of goods or services. In other words, they are outside the scope of GST. GST law has clarif- classified certain activities or transactions either as supply of goods or as supply of services. Government is also empowered to notify transactions that are to be treated as a supply of goods, not as a supply of services. Or as a supply of services and not as a supply of goods. In the subsequent paras, the above aspects of supply have been extensively discussed. First, supply includes supply of goods or services for consideration in the course or furtherance of business. So supply should be of goods or of services or both. Supply includes specified forms of supply. And should be for a consideration and should be in the course or furtherance of business. Second, activities or transaction between a person other than an individual and its members. Or its constituents for cash deferred payment or other valuable consideration is also deemed as supply. Importation of services for consideration whether or not in the course or furtherance of business, it is treated as supply. Supply without consideration, whatever that has come in schedule one will still be treated as supply. Supply excludes non-supplies under GST which is covered under schedule three. And under schedule two, there has been a clarificatory area where it is deemed as goods. Or it is deemed as supply of service. So first we will talk about seven subsection one clause A, supply of goods. Or services for consideration in course or furtherance of business. The definition of supply begins with the term supply includes thus making it clear. That CGST Act intends to give an extensive meaning to the term supply. Supply includes all form of supply of goods or services or both. Supply of anything other than goods or services like money, securities does not attract GST. The term goods and services as defined under the act has been, the terms have been analyzed by way of diagram on the next page. Anything supplied other than goods and services is outside the scope of supply. Goods means every kind of movable property and it includes actionable claims, growing crops, grass. And the things attached to or forming part of the land which are agreed to be severed before supply or under a contract of supply. And goods excludes money and securities, services means anything other than goods. And it includes activities relating to use of money or conversion of money by cash. By any other mode from one form currency denomination to another for which a separate consideration is charged. Supply includes specified forms of supply should be for consideration and should be in the course or furtherance of business. The first part of section seven clause A of subsection one includes all forms of supply of goods. Or services or both such as sale, transfer, barter, exchange, license, re- rental, lease or disposal. Made or agreed to be made in, uh made, agreed to be made for consideration in the course or furtherance of business. It is important to note that supply includes all forms of supply within its purview. Though eight illustration illustrative forms of supply have been enlisted in the definition. Further, supply as contemplated in this first part has two prerequisites. One is, supply should be for a consideration and it should be in the course or furtherance of business. Let us talk about the various forms of supply. First is sale and transfer. The dictionary meaning of term sale is the act of selling specifically. The transfer of ownership of and the title to property from one person to another for a price. As per the Sale of Goods Act nineteen thirty, a contract of sale of goods is a contract whereby. The seller transfers or agrees to transfer the property in goods to the buyer for a price. Further, the term transfer has been defined in the Black's Law Dictionary as to convey or remove from one place person to another. Pass or handover from one to another specifically to make over the possession or control of. A shopkeeper sells a pen for rupees hundred to the buyer. After the sale, the pen belongs to the buyer and the shopkeeper does not have any right on the pen. This is a transaction of sale. And company trans- transfers goods from its factory to the depot for sale purposes. This is transfer of goods where the sale has not yet taken place. Barter and exchange. The dictionary meaning of the term barter is to exchange goods or services for other. For other goods or services instead of using money. Black's Law Dictionary defines the term exchange as an act of giving or taking one thing for another. While barter, barter deals with a transaction which only includes an exchange of goods or services. Exchange may cover a situation where goods are paid partly in goods and partly in money. When there is a barter of goods or services, same activity constitutes supply as well as consideration. When a new car worth rupees five lakh is purchased in exchange of an old car worth along with monetary consideration of. Four lakh paid for the said purchase, this is an exchange transaction. A doctor got his haircut from a barber and provides him medical consultancy in return. In this transaction, the doctor provided medical consultancy services. To the barber for which consideration was in the form of haircutting services provided by the barber. Similarly, barber provided haircutting services to the doctor for which. Consideration was in the form of medical consultancy service provided by the doctor. So we have completed the first segment that leads us to the second segment of this video. Charge of GST, next revision, introduction. Power to levy tax is drawn from the constitution of India. To pay way for the introduction of GST, hundred first constitutional amendment act two thousand sixteen was passed. By virtue of this act, enabling provision was made to levy GST on supply of goods or services or both in India. Central excess duty, state VAT and certain specific state taxes and service tax were subsumed into a comprehensive GST. The very basis of, the very basis for the charge of tax in any taxing statute is the taxable event. That is the occurrence of the event which triggers levy of tax. As discussed earlier, the taxable event under GST is supply. CGST and SGST or UTGST are levied on all interstate supplies of goods and or services. While IGST is levied on all interstate supplies of goods or services. The provisions relating to levy and collection of CGST and IGST are contained in section nine of the CGST nine two thousand seventeen. And the section five of IGST two thousand seventeen respectively. Let us know that we have, uh let us now have a fundamental idea of interstate supply and interstate supply. As a general rule, location of the supplier and the place of supply of goods or services are in the same state or unit territory. It is treated as interstate supply. And if the location of the supplier and the place of supply of goods and services are in two different states. Or two different union territories or a state and a union territory, then it is treated as intra- interstate. Supply of goods and services respectively. Relevant definitions, central tax means. The central goods and the service tax levied under section nine of the CGST Act. Integrated tax means the integrated goods and service tax levied under section five, I think. What's given here, charging section, yes, five of the IGST Act. State tax means the tax levied under any state goods and service tax act, two clause one not four. Goods means every kind of movable property other than money and securities but includes actionable claim. Growing crops, grass and the things attached to or forming part of the land which are agreed to be severed before supply. Or under a contract of supply, two clause fifty two. Electronic commerce means the supply of goods or services or both including digital products over digital or electronic networks. E-commerce operator means any person who owns, operates or manages. A digital or electronic facility or platform for e-commerce. Two clause forty five, exempt supply means supply of any goods or services or both which attracts nil rate of tax. Or which may be wholly exempt from tax under section eleven or under section six of IGST Act. And includes non-taxable supply. Non-taxable supply means supply of goods or services which is not leviable to tax under this act. Or under the IGST Act. Okay. Exempt supply is different, non-taxable supplets is different. So exempt supply can be taxable but subsequently it gets exempt either by nil rate of tax or by exemptions. Aggregate turnover. Aggregate turnover means the aggregate value of all taxable supplies excluding the value of inward supplies on which. Tax is payable by a person on reverse charge basis. Exempt supplies, exports of goods or services or both. And interstate supplies of persons having the same pan. Permanent account number, they have missed the word number, permanent account number. To be computed on all India basis but excludes central tax, state tax, unit territory tax integrated as tax and says. Prescribed means prescribed by rules made under this act on the recommendations of the council. Business includes any trade, commerce, manufacture, profession, vocation, adventure, wager. Or any other similar activity whether or not it is for a pecuniary benefit. Any activity or transaction in connection with or incidental or ancillary to A above. Any activity or transaction in the nature of A above. Whether or not there is volume, frequency, continuity or regularity of such transaction. Supply or acquisition of goods including capital assets and the services in connection with commencement of commencement or closure of business. Provision by a club, association, society or any such body for a. Subscription or any other consideration of the facilities. Or members or benefits to its members as the case may be, admission for a consideration of persons. To any premises and services supplied by a person as the holder of an office which has been accepted by him. In the course or furtherance of his trade, profession or vocation. Activities of a race club including by way of totalizer or a licensed to bookmaker. Or activities of a licensed bookmaker in such club. Any activity or transaction undertaken by the central government, a state government or any local authority. In which they are engaged as public authorities. So this is section two clause seventeen. Let us talk about consideration. Consideration in relation to the supply of goods or services or both includes. Any payment made or to be made whether in money or otherwise in respect of in response to. Or for the inducement of the supply of goods or services or both. Whether by the recipient or by any other person but shall not include. Any subsidy given by the central government or a state government. The monetary value of any act or forbearance in respect of, in response to. Or for the inducement of the supply of goods or services or both. Whether by the recipient or by any other person but shall not include. Any subsidy given by the central government or a state government. However, a deposit in respect of the supply of goods or services or both shall not be considered as. Payment made for such supply unless the supplier applies such deposit as consideration for the said supply. To clause thirty one. Person includes an individual, H U F, company, firm, limited liability partnership. Association of persons or a body of individuals whether incorporated or not in India or outside India. Any corporation established by or under any central state or provincial act. Or government company as defined in section two clause forty five of the Companies Act two thousand thirteen. Anybody corporate incorporated by or under the laws of a country outside India. A cooperative society registered under any law relating to cooperative societies. Local authority, central government or state government, society as defined under Societies Registration Act. Trust, every artificial juridical person not falling above. Recipient of supply of goods and or services means. Where a consideration is payable for the supply of goods or services or both. The person who is made, person who is liable to pay that consideration. Where no consideration is payable for the supply of goods. The person to whom goods are delivered or made available to whom the possession. Or to whom the possession or use of the goods is given or made available and. Where no consideration is payable for the supply of a service, the person to whom the service is rendered. And any reference to a person to whom a supply is made shall in, shall be construed as. A reference to the recipient of the supply and shall include an agent. Acting as such on behalf of the recipient in relation to the goods or services or both supplied. Section two clause ninety three. Registered person means a person who is registered under section twenty five but does not include a person having unique identity number. Reverse charge means the liability to pay tax by the recipient of the supply of goods or services or both. Instead of the supplier of such goods or services or both. Under section nine, subsection three, nine subsection four or under five subsection three, five subsection four. Of the IGST Act, two clause ninety eight. Services means anything other than goods, money and securities but includes activities relating to. The use of money or its conversion by cash or by any other mode from one form currency or denomination. To another form currency or denomination for which a separate consideration is charged, two clause hundred and two. Explanation, for the removal of doubts, it is hereby clarified that. The expression services includes facilitating or arranging transactions in securities. Supplier in relation to any goods or services or both shall mean the person supplying the said goods or services or both. And shall include an agent acting as such on behalf of such supplier. In relation to the goods or services or both supplied. However, a person who organizes or arranges directly or indirectly. Supply of specified actionable claims, including a person who owns, operates or manages. Digital or electronic platform for such supply shall be deemed to be a supplier of such actionable claims. Whether such actionable claims are supplied by him or through him and whether consideration in money or money's worth. Including virtual digital assets for supply of such actionable claims is paid or conveyed to him. Or through him or placed at his disposal in any manner. And all the provisions of this act shall apply to such supplier of specified actionable claims. As if he is the supplier liable to pay the tax in relation to supply of such actionable claims. Next, taxable supply. It means a supply of goods and or services which is leviable to CGS- tax under CGST Act. Taxable person means a person who is registered or liable to be registered under section twenty two or twenty four of the CGST Act. It is important to note that a person who is liable to be registered but does not take a registration. And remains an unregistered person shall be construed as a taxable person. Similarly, a person not liable to be registered but has taken voluntary registration. And got himself registered is also a taxable person. So we have completed the second segment of today's study session. Which is the round four revision of page number one to seven of the third chapter. Now let us go to the next segment, round three, classification under GST. In order to determine the rate applicable on a particular supply of goods or services. One needs to first determine the classification of such goods or services. Classification of goods and services assumes significance since there are different rates prescribed for supply. Of different goods and services. Therefore, classification is crucial for determining the rate of tax applicable on a particular product or services. Classification of goods means identification of the chapter, heading, subheading and tariff item in which a particular product will be classified. Sections, chapter, heading, subheading and tariff item. Chapter, heading, subheading and tariff item are referred in the schedules of rate notification for goods. Under GST are the chapter, heading, subheading and tariff item of the first schedule to the. Customs Tariff Act nineteen seventy five. Indian customs tariff is based on HSN. HSN stands for harmonized system of nomenclature. It is a multi-purpose international product nomenclature developed by the World Customs Organization. For the purpose of classifying goods across the world in a systematic manner. It comprises of about five thousand commodity groups, each identified by a six digits code. Arranged in a legal and logical structure and is supported by well-defined rules to achieve uniform classification. India has extended the HSN codes up to eight digits. Along the lines of HSN, Indian customs tariff has set a ru- has a set of rules of interpretation. Of the first schedule and the general explanatory notes. These rules and the general explanatory notes give clear direction as to the, as to how the nomenclature in the schedule is to be interpreted. These rules for interpretation including section and chapter notes and the general explanatory notes of the. First schedule apply to the interpretation of the rate notification for goods under GST. Consequently, under GST, goods are classified on the basis of HSN. In accordance with the rules for interpretation of a customs tariff. Once classification for a product has been determined on the basis. Applicable rate has to be determined as per the rate prescribed in the rate notification issued under GST. Classification of services, a new scheme of classification of services has been devised under GST. It is a modified version of the United Nations Central Product Classification. Under this scheme, the services of various descriptions have been classified under various sections, headings and groups. Chapter ninety nine has been assigned for services. This chapter has following sections, construction services. Distributive trade services, accommodation, food and beverage service, transport services, gas and electricity distribution services. Section seven, financial and related services, real estate services and rental and leasing services. Section eight, business and production services. Section nine, community, social and personal services and other miscellaneous services. Each section is divided into various headings which are further divided into groups. Its further division is made in the form of tariff item or service codes. Chapter, section, heading, group, tariff item or service code. Rate of tax is determined in accordance with the service code in which the service is classified. GST prescribed for various goods. Broadly, six rates of GST have been notified in six schedules of rate notification for goods with. Point one to five percentage, one point five, two point five, six, nine and fourteen. SGST and UTGST at the equivalent rate is also leviable. With regard to IGST, broadly six rates have been notified in six schedules of rate of no- of rate notification for goods. With point two five percent, three percent, five percent, twelve, eighteen and twenty eight percentage. Certain specified goods have been exempted from tax. GST rates prescribed for various services broadly six rates have been notified for services. With point seven five, two point five, three point seven five, six, nine and fourteen. Equivalent rate of SGST, UTGST will also be levied. For IGST, six rates have been notified for services with one point five, five percent, seven point five, twelve percent, eighteen percent and twenty eight percent. For certain specified services, nil rate of tax has been notified. Services of gambling, services by way of admission to casinos or race clubs. Or any place having casinos or race clubs or sporting events like IPL. Services provided by a race club by way of totalizer or a licensed to bookmaker in such club. Gambling etc. attract the highest rate of twenty eight percentage. A number of services are subject to a lower rate of GST at five percentage. For instance, GTA service is taxed at five percentage subject to the condition that credit of input tax. Charged on goods or services used in supplying said service has not been taken. Similarly, tax rate for supply of restaurant services other than at specified premises is. Five percentage without any input tax credit. Effective rate of GST on real estate sector for the new projects. Be, new projects by promoters are as follows, one percentage without I T C on construction of affordable houses. Area sixty square meters in metros, ninety square meters or in non-metros and value up to forty five lakhs. Five percentage without I T C is applicable on construction of all houses other than affordable houses and. Commercial apartments such as shops etcetera, offices etcetera in a residential real estate project. In which the carpet area of commercial apartments is not more than fifteen percentage of total carpet area of all apartments. Above conditions, above the conditions, conditions above rates. Conditions above tax rates shall be available subject to following conditions, I T C not be available. Eighty percentage of inputs and input services used in supplying the service. Shall be purchased from registered persons. Other than services by way of grant of development rights, long-term lease of land. Against upfront payment in the form of premium salami development charges or F S I including additional F S I, electricity, high-speed diesel. Motor spirit and natural gas input services. Eighty percent should be done from registration, registered persons, okay. However, if value of inputs and input services purchased from registered supplier is less than eighty percentage. Promoter has to pay GST on reverse charge basis under section nine subsection four at the rate of eighteen percentage. On all such inward supplies to the extent of eighty percentage. To the extent short of eighty percentage of inward supplies from such registered supplier. Further, where cement is received from an unregistered person, the promoter shall pay tax on supply of such cement on reverse charge basis. Under section nine subsection four at the applicable rate which is twenty eight percentage at present. Moreover, GST on capital goods shall be paid by the promoter on reverse charge basis under section nine subsection four at the applicable rates. We have concluded round three, just segment three, round three as well. Now let us go to the last, but. Now let us go to the fourth segment which is round two of what we studied yesterday, page number sixty two sixty six. Who are not eligible to opt for composition scheme? Registered person who is not eligible for composition scheme under section ten subsection one. Registered person who is not eligible for composition scheme under section ten subsection one. Supplier engaged in making any supply of goods or services which are not levyable to tax in the first place. Supplier engaged in making any interstate outward supplies of goods or services. Person supplying any services through an e-commerce operator who is required to collect tax at source under. Section fifty two. Manufacturer of ice cream, pan masala, tobacco, aerated waters, fly ash bricks, fly ash aggregate. Fly ash blocks, bricks of fossil meals or similar silicious earths, building bricks, arten or roofing tiles. Supplier who is either a casual taxable person or a non-resident taxable person. Supplier of services save as provided in section ten subsection one. Registered person who is not eligible for composition scheme under section ten subsection two A. Supplier engaged in making any supply of goods or services which are not levyable to tax. Supplier engaged in making any interstate outward supplies of goods or services. Person supplying any services through an e-commerce operator who is required to collect tax at source under section fifty two. Manufacturer of notified goods or supplier of notified services. Supplier who is either a casual taxable person or a non-resident taxable person. There is no restriction on composition supplier to receive interstate inward supplies of goods or services. A person engaged in marginal supply of services other than restaurant service also eligible for is also. Also eligible for composition scheme under section ten subsection one, second proviso to ten subsection one, read with section ten. Subsection two clause A. Fundamentally, the composition scheme under section ten subsection one can primarily be availed. In respect of goods and only one service namely restaurant service, however, there are cases. Where a manufacturer or trader is also engaged in supply of services other than restaurant service though. The percentage of such supply of services is very small as compared to the supplies of goods. There may also be cases where a restaurant service provider is also engaged in supplying a small percentage of other services. With a view to enable such taxpayers to avail the benefit of. Composition scheme under section ten subsection one. Second proviso to section one permits, section ten subsection one permits. Marginal supply of services other than restaurant services not supplying alcoholic liquor for human consumption. For a specified value along with the supply of goods and or restaurant service as the case may be. This specified value is not exceeding ten percentage of the turnover in a state or union territory in the preceding year. Or rupees five lakhs whichever is higher. Thus, it can be inferred that where the turnover of a registered person opting for composition scheme under ten subsection one is up to fifty lakhs. In the preceding financial year, he can supply services other than restaurant services. Up to a maximum of five lakhs in the current financial year. Further, where the turnover of registered person opting for composition scheme is. More than fifty lakhs and up to one point five crores. More than fifty lakhs and one point five crores in the preceding financial year, he can supply services other than restaurant service. In the current financial year, up to a maximum of maximum value of ten percentage of the turnover. In a state or union territory in the preceding financial year. Ram Sevak is engaged in supply of goods, his turnover in the preceding financial year is sixty lakhs. Since his aggregate turnover in the preceding financial year does not exceed one and a half crores. He is eligible for composition scheme under ten subsection one in current financial year. Further, in current financial year, he can supply services other than restaurant services. Up to a value of not exceeding ten percentage of sixty lakhs, six lakhs or five lakhs whichever is higher. Thus, he can supply services up to a value of six lakhs in the current financial year. If the value of services supplied exceeds six lakhs, he becomes ineligible for the composition scheme. Under section ten subsection one and has to opt out of the same. Interest income to be excluded for determining the value of turnover in a state or union territory under second proviso to section. The ten subsection one. Explanation to second proviso to section ten subsection one. Generally, businesses tend to have. Generally, businesses tend to save and invest money in the form of deposits, loans or advances. However, this way, they get engaged in supply of service by way of extending deposits, loans or advances. A service other than restaurant service. And where the income from such services cost the value of services supplied to exceed the value referred to. Referred in section, second proviso to section ten subsection one. Ten percentage of the turnover in the preceding financial year in a state or union territory of fi- or five lakhs whichever is higher. Said business would have become ineligible for the composition scheme under section ten subsection one. And one has to opt out of the composition scheme. This can cause a lot of hardship to small businesses. In view of the above, explanation is inserted after second proviso to section ten subsection one to clarify that for the purposes of. Second proviso to section ten subsection one. The value of supply of exempt services by way of extending deposits, loans or advances in so far as. Consideration is represented by way of interest or discount shall not be taken into account. For determining the value of turnover in a state or union territory. Under second proviso to section ten subsection one. A registered person opting for composition scheme may supply services other than restaurant services of value not exceeding. Ten percentage of the turnover in the preceding financial year in a state or union territory or five lakhs. Whichever is higher, thus while. Computing value of services other than restaurant services as referred in this, as referred to in this proviso. Interest on loans, deposits, advances will not be taken into account. Interest income is to be excluded, so that's the final bottom line here. The provisions relating to composition levy discussed hereafter are applicable to both composition. Levy under section ten subsection one as well as composition levy under section ten subsection two A. Conditions and restrictions for composition levy rule number five. Person opting for composition levy has to comply with the following conditions. He shall pay tax under section nine subsection three or nine subsection four on inward supply of goods or services or both. He is neither a casual taxable person nor a resident taxable person. He shall mention the words composition taxable person, not eligible to collect tax on supplies at the top of the bill of supply. Issued by him and he shall mention the words composition taxable person on every notice. Or signboard display at a prominent place at his principal place of business and at every additional place or places of business. Further, where the goods held in stock by him are liable to be taxed under reverse charge under section nine subsection four. The tax thereon has been paid under reverse charge under section nine subsection four. In addition to the above conditions, a registered person opting for composition scheme under section ten subsection one. Must not be engaged in the manufacturer, manufacture of goods as notified under section ten. Subsection two clause E during the preceding financial year. The following goods have been hereby notified by notification. Fourteen bar two thousand nineteen dated seventh March twenty nineteen. Okay, tariff items, subheading, heading or chapter. Two one zero five double zero double zero, description, ice cream and other edible ice, whether or not containing cocoa. Two one zero six ninety twenty pan masala. This condition applies in case where a builder or promoter opting for. Uh, composition scheme has the stock of the goods on which he is required to pay GST on reverse charge basis. Under section nine subsection four, in one or more of the following cases. Builder or promoter must purchase at least eighty percentage of inputs and input services. Used in supplying the service from registered persons. In case of shortfall, he is required to pay tax under reverse charge on all such inward supplies. To the extent short of eighty percentage of inward supplies from registered supplier. Where cement is received from an unregistered person, promoter or builder has to pay tax on supply. Of such cement under a reverse charge and GST on capital goods is payable by the promoter on reverse charge basis. Okay, again, go back to the notified goods. Tariff item or I think this is chapter twenty four, all goods, that is tobacco and manufactured tobacco substitutes. Two two zero two one zero one zero aerated waters, six eight one five fly ash bricks, fly ash aggregate, fly ash, fly ash blocks. Six nine zero one double zero one zero brick, bricks of fossil meals or similar silicious earths. Six nine zero four one zero double zero building bricks. Six nine zero five one zero double zero arten or roofing tiles. Intimation for intimation of opting for composition levy rules three and four. Intimation by person applying for registration, any person who is not registered. And applies for registration may give an option to pay tax under under composition levy in part B of the registration form. With form GST REG zero one. The same shall be considered as an intimation to pay tax under composition levy. Such intimation shall be considered only after the grant of registration to the applicant. The option to pay tax under composition levy shall be effective from the date from which registration is effective. Registration shall be effective on the from the date on which the person becomes liable to registration. Where the application for registration has been submitted within a period of thirty days from such date. Where an application for registration has been submitted by the applicant after the expiry of thirty days from the date of his becoming liable to registration. The effective date of registration shall be the date of the grant of registration. Okay, intimation by a registered person. A registered person who opts to pay tax under composition levy scheme shall electronically file an intimation. In prescribed form on the GST common portal. In the intimation shall be filed prior to the commencement of the financial year for which said option is exercised. He shall also furnish the statement in prescribed form in accordance with the provision, provisions of rule forty four, sub rule four. Of CGST rules within sixty days from the commencement of the relevant financial year. Any intimation in respect of any place of business in a state or union territory shall be deemed to be. An intimation in respect of all other places of business registered on the same pan. The option to pay tax under composition levy shall be effective from the beginning of the financial year. A person applying for registration can opt for composition at the time of applying for registration. This being any time of the financial year and composition levy shall be effective from the date from which registration is effective. A registered person can opt for composition scheme from the beginning of any financial year and the composition levy shall be effective. From the beginning of the said financial year. Intimation for opting to pay tax under composition scheme must be filed. Prior to the commencement of the financial year for which said option is exercised. Okay, person applying for registered person can opt for composition levy at any time. During the year while applying for registration. Composition levy shall be effective from the date which a registration is active, okay. Registered person, already registered person can opt for composition of composition levy from the beginning of any financial year. Composition levy shall be effective from the beginning of the said financial year, okay. Okay, from now, let us continue with the rest of the chapter. We have till page number seventy one, so let us read this through. Fresh pages for the day, the last four to five pages of this chapter. Validity of composition levy, section ten subsection three, read with rule six. Withdrawal from the composition scheme by a taxpayer who ceases to satisfy any of the prescribed conditions. The option exercised by a registered person to pay amount under composition levy shall remain valid. So long as he satisfies all the conditions mentioned in the relevant sections and rules. For instance, the option to pay tax under composition scheme lapses from the day on which aggregate turnover of a registered person exceeds the. Specified limit of one point five crores or seventy five lakhs or fifty lakhs during the financial year. Such person is required to pay tax under regular scheme. Under section nine subsection one from the day he ceases to satisfy any of the conditions prescribed for composition levy. He shall issue tax invoice for every taxable supply made thereafter. Further, he is required to file an intimation for withdrawal. From the scheme in prescribed form within seven days of the concurrent occurrence of such event. The effective date from which withdrawal from the composition scheme shall take effect. Shall be the date indicated by him in his intimation. But such date may not be prior to the commencement of the financial year in which such intimation is being filed. Withdrawal from the composition scheme by a taxpayer who intends to withdraw from the said scheme. The registered person who intends to withdraw from the composition scheme. Shall before the date of such withdrawal, file an application in prescribed form. The effective date from which withdrawal from the composition scheme shall take effect shall be. The date indicated by him in his application. But such date may not be prior to the commencement of the financial year in which such application for withdrawal is being filed. Denial of option to pay tax under composition scheme by tax authorities. Where the proper officer has reasons to believe that the registered person was not eligible to pay tax under composition scheme. Or has contravened the provisions of the CGST Act or provisions of this chapter. He may issue a show cost notice to such person. Upon receipt of reply to SEN, the proper officer shall pass. An order either accepting the reply or denying the option to pay tax under composition scheme. From the date of the option or from the date of the event concerning such contravention as the case may be. In case of denial of option to pay tax under composition levy by the tax authorities. The effective date of such denial shall be from the date, including any retrospective date. As may be determined by tax authorities. However, such effective date shall not be prior to the date of contravention of. The provisions of the CGST or CGST rules. In each of the above cases, such person may furnish a statement in prescribed form. Containing details of the stock of inputs and inputs contained in semi-finished or finished goods. Held in stock by him on the date on which the option is withdrawn or denied. Within a period of thirty days from the date from which the option is withdrawn or from the date of the order denying composition scheme. Any intimation or application for withdrawal or denial of the option to pay tax under section ten. In respect of any place of business in any state or union territory shall be deemed to be an intimation. In respect of all other places of business registered on the same pan. A person availing composition scheme during a financial year crosses the turnover of one point five crores on ninth of December. The option availed shall lapse from the day on which his aggregate turnover during the financial year exceeds. One point five crore, that is on ninth December in this case. Composition scheme to be adopted uniformly by all the registered persons having the same pan. Proviso to section ten subsection two and ten subsection two A. All registered persons having the same permanent account number have to opt. All registered persons having the same permanent account number have to opt for composition scheme if one such registered person. Options for normal scheme others become ineligible for composition scheme. A dealer Kishori Lal sons has two offices in Delhi and is eligible for. Composition levy under section ten subsection one if Kishori Lal and Sons. Options for the composition scheme under section ten subsection one both officers would pay taxes under composition scheme. And abide by all the conditions as may be prescribed for the said composition scheme. Composition scheme supplier cannot collect tax ten subsection four. Taxable person opting for the composition scheme shall not collect tax from the recipient on supplies made by him. It implies that a composition scheme supplier cannot issue a tax invoice. Composition scheme supplier cannot enter into credit chain. Taxable person opting out of opting for the composition scheme shall not be eligible to any credit of input tax. Imposition of penalty in case of irregular availability of composition scheme. Imposition of penalty in case of regular availability of the composition scheme ten subsection five. If a taxable person has paid tax under the composition scheme though he was not eligible for the scheme. The person would be liable to penalty and the provisions of section seventy three or seventy four of the. CGST Act shall be applicable for determination of tax and penalty. Okay a registered person is not eligible for composition scheme even though. His aggregate turnover does not exceed one point five crores in the preceding financial year trading in pan masala. Manufacturing aerated waters. Receiving any interstate inward. Supplies of goods making supply of goods exempted by way of notification. So the answer is notified goods trading in pan masala is notified goods manufacturing aerated what aerated waters is also notified goods. Making supply of goods exempted by way of notification so exam supplies. So A, B's and D are not eligible. Receiving any interstates inward supply of goods is eligible you can receive interstate supply but you cannot. Supply outward you cannot make outward supply of interstate uh delivery. So then you are then you become ineligible for composition scheme so you can see here. Under section ten a person supplying goods or services not leavable to tax. Disqualified interstate disqualified tobacco aerated waters disqualified so only person receiving. Uh interstate supply is eligible so the question is they have to reframe the question a registered person. Who is eligible only C is eligible or other three are ineligible. Aladdin electronics is engaged in interstate supply of air conditioners and has an aggregate turnover of ninety lakh. In the preceding financial year in the current financial year it wishes to opt for composition scheme under section ten subsection one and ten subsection two. It will start providing services of repairing of air conditioners also from first April of current financial year. Aladdin electronics can provide provide services up to the value of what to continue availing benefit of the levy. So ninety lakhs into ten percentage so nine lakhs or five lakhs whichever is higher so the answer is nine lakhs here. So that brings us to the conclusion of this study session we have also completed. The third chapter charge of GST so supply under GST it took us. Seventy five pages took us eleven sessions and similarly charge of GST has taken us twelve study sessions. On that uh because we had to break down a little bit more. Uh because of the round five started to happen. That's why I broke down even more or else I could have covered more pages in a day but it's okay still. So we are covering big chapters like this almost in two weeks. We started our journey on third of October and we are in the end of first month so it's like almost one third of our. Project is over and we have completed also three chapters and supply under GST we have completed four rounds of revision. Charge of GST we have almost done three rounds of revision half of chapter and the rest of the chapter two rounds yes in the days to come. We will be you know covering the revision anyway and from tomorrow we will be seeing the next chapter whatever that is. In the. And and from tomorrow we will be starting to read place of supply. Again this chapter looks a little longer eighty four pages but if you exclude all the recapitulate and. Test your knowledge questions I think the num- core number of pages will be much lesser. Anyway we will be continuing with place of supply from tomorrow on that note thank you and bye bye.